I remain unconvinced that we need the five in seventy-five. I support the twelve, thirteen, and fourteen of Aprilianianics that they there. So if you were going to ask my opinion right now, the way it is, I would not be in favor of that. But it's only because I think it's our business to be involved with the land use, not the business model or the business chart. That's simply my perspective on this.
I don't disagree with you, actually. But we held several meetings with people from the township and were trying to incorporate...
I understand.
Yep. Okay. I think we're all on the same page. Any other comments? Okay. At this time, we basically have a couple of options. One is to recommend approval and county planning with the changes that I just outlined. One would be to table this, because we just like to do that. Or the other would be send it back to these guys and the committee to do further work. If anybody has a strong inkling anyway, you can...
I'll make the motion that we recommend approval of ordinance number three, eighty-one AG, agricultural district ordinance as revised, that we just talked about with those twelve...
Twelve, thirteen, and then S P one or R.
And forwarded to Grand Parish County Planning Commission for review and comment.
Nice statement. And approval? Did you say that?
He did say it.
Okay. It got long. All in favor of that motion that is on the table, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
John said no.
John said no.
Oh, thank you. Okay, medical marijuana. Last meeting, you had requested a map of a thousand-foot radius of schools, parks, waterways, playgrounds. You have some impressive view and you also have several examples on the board. And Jeff, did you make a determination on that definition?
Well, it would...
I asked him to clarify the TARP, if that would fall by for a park.
In two thousand and eleven, when this body recommended that the township board approve the existing version of the ordinance, you defined park as any land or facility...
Not my fault.
She laughed at her phone.
I was looking for her phone.
Is she having her...
Oh, wait.
Okay, we're good.
It means any land or facility of any size or shape, including but not limited to linear waves, road ends, and submerged lands that are open to the public and used for recreation or held for future recreational use. I think, you know, oftentimes trails like the TARP are referred to as linear parks. I don't, you know, I don't have any... And I think you could, I think it fits within the definition that the TARP trail falls within that definition, parks. So you could say that within one thousand feet of the TARP trail, you would be prohibited. Now, I'm not sure that that makes that much of a difference in light of all of the remainder of the ordinance, because it's only allowed in B two, which is a limited area, right now, anyway. So it's only, you guys correct me if I'm wrong, right? Because it's up there, right? So it's only allowed on this south side, right, south side of seventy-two? And then down through this way. Now, I don't remember what, how you dealt with it in the new ordinance, though.
The new ordinance.
In the, in the...
Form-based code.
Form-based code that will be, you know, it's next on the agenda.
US thirty-eight, M seventy-two Business District.
Yeah, so how is it, is it in, allowed in all of the... Well, let's just talk about what it is now and I guess what the next step will be figuring out. But also, in addition, you're not, you can't have any within a thousand feet of an existing two. And the one existing, and I think he's, would still fall into the definition of dispensary, although I've never confirmed it, I know he used to.
Who can be updated on that?
Be a dispensary.
There's like no, they're not even allowing it. Who was just saying?
Oh, really?
Oh, no, that was the one.
Did you say that?
No, she's...
You said that.
That was the one that's saying that they've been a non-conforming use this whole time.
The antique store?
Oh, okay.
Thirty-one, that's this one, that's...
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
No, that guy helped get helping hands.
Sorry, I got...
He's on the other side of, well...
He's right on the other side of the down end.
Yeah, which is like right here, right?
That's the stained glass desk.
So, yeah, within a thousand feet of him, there's nothing allowed either right now. So really, under the ordinance, right, it stands right now. No one else could come in and build a dispensary the way it stands right now.
Oh, if you count the TARP trail.
Even if you don't, right?
Then it takes out that whole, like where the...
Even if you don't, right?
I don't think you can either way.
Because, because he's right, like right here. No, this is the creek, right? He's on the other side of the creek, right? Isn't he right here?
He's right here, though.
Oh, yeah.
They could start selling it out of the Gulf Coast, didn't they?
Seems. Yeah, there are... They'd be happy.
So unless the TARP trail... Okay, so there is a spot.
Right, so if the TARP trail...
The TARP trail is applicable and there is a spot.
There is something to down.
So, let's, like, so I'm going to give you the update that I tried to figure out what the latest is. Remember last meeting, I said that the bill had stalled in Senate Committee? Now, according to the Weed Blog, authored by Rick Thompson today, it will be, they will take testimony on it tomorrow at eleven P M., or one P M., the eleven, that one P M., on the bill. So the bill's moving, who knows where it's going to go. What the bill does, though, remember, is it allows a community to decide whether it wants to have dispensaries. They call it something else, I forget what they call it. But it allows a community to decide. Community doesn't want to have them, then it will allow you to prohibit it. Right now, they're technically prohibited, even though your ordinance allows them. They're technically not authorized by law, although, you know, I mean, it's always been, it's my opinion that, you know, that guy operating out there, you know, if anyone's going to shut them down, it shouldn't be the township, it should be the sheriff, because it's a question of, you know, the medical marijuana act, not whether your ordinance allows it or not. So here's what I, looking at the, the radiuses and what's going on right now under your current ordinance, and if we assume the TARP trail, there'd be no place for anyone to build on your current ordinance right now. If you don't assume the TARP trail, then I guess there is that little section down here where someone could spot one. But they can't do it right now, technically right now, under the law, under the state law, because of what the court has said. So the question for you then is, is, the important question for you is, do you want to overall allow dispensaries? Because if the law passes, if this law comes out of the Committee and then passes through the Senate and the governor signs a bill, dispensaries will be affirmatively allowed. Your ordinance allows dispensaries in B two, but we need to talk about where that will be allowed in the future. And technically, there could be other places where, or there could be dispensaries, additional dispensaries. If you're not, you know, if you, the township has changed its position, or the Planning Commission feels like it should be changed, which is why we discussed the moratorium, then maybe we, you do want to amend the current ordinance. But I don't think, at this point, looking at the radii and the current state of the law, that you really need to worry about a moratorium right now. It would appear that's the case. So, I mean, I think the question at this point, my opinion is, the question for you is, how do you fill out the current ordinance? And what is the, what is the B four? What does that do to medical marijuana going forward? Yeah. So they are allowed in any of the red. They would be allowed in any of the red, which is, and that's the existing B two, right, out to here?
Yeah, yep.
So this would be off, right? I mean, the question still, what about up there?
Up there, it's pretty much, you know.
It's hard to tell.
You've got...
Can you see that over there?
You've got B two up here, this is B two, this is B two.
Okay, that's existing B two. Or is that within, is that parcel within the radius?
It did touch that parcel.
Did touch it.
The property did touch that.
Well, you have the Deepwater Point National Area, and then you have Christ the King Church.
There's that one right there.
Which is this, churches too, or just parks, the schools, the playgrounds? Well, there's Birth of Oz. Yeah, Birth of Oz is right there.
Goes right behind it.
Birth of Oz International School. International School at Birth of Oz.
Yeah, the buffer excludes, I mean, medical, it says, "A medical marijuana dispenser shall not be located within one thousand feet."
I have a hypothetical. So if this bill passes and the bill allows us to decide if we want it or not, we can decide no.
Yes. If you decide no, what we would do is we would basically
Remove that section.
Take this as an allowed use out of the zoning ordinance, we just tear this page out of law.
But we still have one.
You would still have one, because there's one existing and operating right now. He's been operating before he had an ordinance.
Helping hands.
First team last.
Right by the creek. Between the vet's office and the...
It used to be where it is.
What are you guys...
You hit your firearm before you go in.
A lot of people drive silver Subaru.
Jeff, I have a question. Yeah. Okay, so I was trying to read a little bit on this, and the planning and zoning newsletter had a whole
Right.
issue dedicated to it. So is this new law going to affect the Tarveek decision? And is it also going to remove the McQueen decision that says dispensaries are illegal?
Yeah. Going, starting with your most recent... The decision that said dispensaries are illegal analyzed the law as it stands today. The law that was passed by the voters whenever that happened, twenty-ten. It would be an amendment to that law. If it were to pass, it would affirmatively allow dispensaries. It would also affirmatively allow municipalities, including Antmi Township, to prohibit dispensaries in its township. So it, it, it would change the law to allow, but also allow local decisions. The other one, that Tarveek, whatever it is, no. That one dealt, that's the one that dealt with the scenario with, what happened was, when the law passed, a number of communities thought that they could prohibit it outright by saying, "We are prohibiting any use that's violative of federal law." And that, that case was like, why don't, why don't we... Yeah. And there were some in metro Detroit area, and in there, the two main areas were like, some of the metro Detroit communities and some of the west side communities. And they thought they were going to prohibit it all by doing that. And the Supreme said, "No, that, that law, or doing that is not okay under the Medical Marijuana Act. The Medical Marijuana Act preempts local prohibition of it." That is, you couldn't prohibit someone from having a card and being a patient or being a caregiver under the act, which is what they were trying to do. The guy who brought that suit, if you read that case, the guy who brought that suit was the guy who said, "I just want to do this in my home, but I'm prohibited now by this ordinance." And the Supreme said, "Yeah. You cannot prohibit it, because the Medical Marijuana Act allows it." And federal law does not preempt, federal criminal code concerning controlled substances does not preempt the state medical marijuana law. All it does is make a criminal offense under federal law, and the state law just says, "We're not going to prosecute you under these certain circumstances." And so they didn't, the Supreme said they didn't. Even though lots of people, including Jerry Fisher and that, who's cited all over that, he thought that Supremes would, would not do what they did. But they unanimously decided that in the other direction.
So it looks, in from what this park, this author is saying, there's really only three options. Do nothing, repeal all your moratoriums, and that your best option is to enact a licensing ordinance?
Well, Antmi Township talked about a licensing ordinance long ago, when we discussed this, and we spent a lot of time on medical marijuana.
Sorry, preface me.
No, I know. No, no, so it's appropriate. So there was discussion about a licensing ordinance. First of all, a licensing ordinance is a police law ordinance, so the Planning Commission could say, "Township Board, we think it'd be best for you to enact a licensing ordinance," but you don't have any authority there down there. The reason that a licensing ordinance was, at least as I recall, it's been a while, I think it was two thousand and eleven, was, was decided against was just, it would, it would be the only operation, only land use that you license in the township. And so, do you have the staff to manage a licensing program, to go visit, to do all this stuff? And was it something you really wanted to do? And the decision was no. So, yeah, you know, repeal, remember, that's written by Mark Wykoff, who's got some very, fairly significant opinions, and lots of people have opinions about his opinions. And, you know, so, I mean, the idea that you shouldn't have a moratorium, well, you know, you can, I disagree with that under certain circumstances. And then do nothing. I mean, I think for you, the question is, is, is right now, you're at a point where the law prohibits, technically prohibits dispensaries, although there are some operating out there. You have one operating in Antmi Township. I guess that's what it is. I don't know. If the law changes and they're allowed, you're going to get, that's what spurred this interest all of a sudden, because they thought this law was going to pass really fast. And when they looked at your ordinance, they said, "Aha, it's allowed." They probably didn't look at the radii carefully, but they saw that it was allowed, so they were calm. You will be able to, if the law passes, you'll be able to prohibit them totally, or allow them if you want, or allow them exactly as you have allowed them. So the question is, is, so assuming the law passes, do you want to allow them or not? And if the law doesn't pass, basically, your status quo, presumably, if the law doesn't pass. I mean, if the law doesn't pass, eventually, probably, what you should do is clean, you know, amongst other things, clean up the ordinance and get rid of this as an allowed use in a township, if it's, if it's not allowed by state law.
So one, or, did you...
No, that's good, fine, no.
So one path that we could take is if we were all of the agreement that we were not crazy about having them here, and we decided that now, we could simply remove that portion. I don't actually know the procedure of that, because it seems like we never just take stuff out.
Yeah. And we'd do the same thing, the text amendments, remove just the use.
We could essentially, if we were all in agreement, remove that, and then if the law passed, we'd say, "Well, we don't allow that."
You know, and here's something that just occurred to me. Assuming that you're going to recommend approval of the new form-based code, I guess you can do it tonight, because you have the public hearing, right?
Yep.
And then it goes to the township board. You could, in one fell swoop, do away with dispensaries by removing them from the, from the form-based code as a use. Oh, they're not at all? Did you look?
Did you check?
Well, John's already removed them for you.
Already moved them for you.
Does that replace all of the B two?
It does, right?
All of it?
I didn't put in, I didn't put medical marijuana.
Somehow, I missed that in my...
I didn't put it in.
My consistency review.
Wait, are you sure?
And I missed it?
Yeah.
I'm trying to think, geography-wise, though, are there any parcels that aren't included in that that...
Well, no.
What?
No, right now, they're only allowed in B two. So if the form-based code encompasses the entire existing B two district...
Right, that's what I'm trying to think of in my head.
Yeah, you know that better than I do. I don't know.
You're good, we're good.
I took, I, because of the issue right now that they're not allowed, or, you know, the state doesn't recognize it, I...
It's not an act.
I didn't permit it.
Does our district replace all of the existing B two?
Actually, I guess, yes, it does. In fact, it's probably...
We're double checking sure on that.
It probably actually expands it a little bit.
So then, do we just need to remove B two? If we don't have any parcels that are going there?
If you, once this ordinance...
Oh, right.
You're also going to have a map on that.
We still have B two.
Yeah. But you won't have, B two will evaporate.
Will evaporate.
Oh, well, if you have existing properties...
If you have existing properties, they would operate under the current ordinance only, but your new, new properties would have to operate under the new one.
Yeah, well, they'll be nonconforming uses if they're not allowed. If they don't meet the standards of the form-based code, they'll be subject to correction as time goes forward.
Yeah.
It's only the form part of the ordinance that's, the old ordinance still contains the buildings.
The existing buildings.
If they're, but if they're completely torn down, you're on the new stuff.
Then they have to do the new stuff, but if they're still...
So that's only four.
Correct.
Not use.
Correct.
All the use stuff is, okay.
Yes.
A use will be, so long as it's allowed, well, so long as it's allowed in the new form-based code, it'll always still be allowed. If it's a use that was allowed in B two, that's no longer allowed in form-based, in the new form-based code section, that use will become a nonconforming use. It can be continued forever and ever, unless it's abandoned. And abandonment is a, is a relatively high standard, to me.
We talked about that.
Yeah. Okay, sorry, I got a little confused. Did my rambling make sense to other people?
I don't, the, the, the answer is, medical marijuana is not in the thirty-one, seventy-two Business District.
And so if we were to recommend to the board approval of that, or adoption of that new business district, the medical marijuana portion of our ordinance is just gone?
Correct.
Except for it's existing presently. Right. Okay.
So...
Are there more portions, then, that we need to take out of the B two, the use portion of it? Because it wouldn't really pertain? They'd all just become nonconforming uses, and then you go with the new business district?
Yeah, I mean, you, where, but, if, once the new ordinance goes into effect...
We'll come back and look at what we can take out of.
Yeah.
Okay. I never thought about that part of it when we were working on the ordinance.
So in other words, I mean, this medical marijuana ordinance, shouldn't we put that behind what everyone's running in form-based? Because, I mean,
Yes.
Because, yeah, I mean, we can put a moratorium on it, but what's the sense if we...
Right.
You enact it, it's gone. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not going to be...
Well, we won't enact it, we can recommend it to board.
Yeah.
So in two weeks, when they...
When the board, if the board adopts this medical marijuana, it's gone unless they want to put it back in later on at the state. If the state says you can discretionary, you can add, you can add, basically taking action.
So...
Yeah. Sorry it came, it's taken so long to like actually realize that, in my behalf.
We're moving on.
But it wouldn't be the same if we took, Doug, it would be the same if we just really, this went over medical marijuana like fast. It's a great, a previous, you know, review and discussion.
Is everyone clear on that?
It's a fine commodity, can I sell that at my front door?
Oh, gosh.
There was, remember, there was talk about...
All right. All right. Does anybody else have questions on that? Because that got a little bit weird. A little murky, maybe?
But the way it's going to be is, is the existing dispensary or whatever it is is going to be able to continue because it's grandfathered in. New ones won't be able to come in until such time as we maybe revise or do something different with that law.
If the, if the district that is number four on our old business right now would replace the uses that are permitted, and medical marijuana is not listed in those as one that's permitted. So essentially, we would be taking that part out of our, our ordinance by recommending to the board approval of that.
Right.
So then, if the, if the state legislature adopts, passes, whatever, to allow dispensaries, we as a township could go back and say, "Maybe we will allow them and put them in somewhere."
Well, don't you.
But as of right now...
Aren't you required to?
But as of right now, they're not allowed by law.
Right, but...
So we're not exclusionarily zoning, because they're not even allowed right now.
Right, but if they become allowed by law, then aren't we required to?
The draft of the law.
The last case.
It's, it's basically, the draft of the law is allowing us to say, "We will not zone for that." Which the Planning and Zoning Enabling Act does not allow us to do, but in this case, the state is saying, "You can, in fact, say no, those can exist here."
We will decide, yes or no.
Okay.
Right. Which is backwards of what it usually is. Usually, we have to stick them somewhere.
Okay.
Right?
Yes.
Clear?
I got a question.
Yes?
I just, I don't want this to be misinterpreted, but I think that there are people that need marijuana that is useful for their treatments and their illnesses and so on, and I think that we should not disregard that in this township. That's all I have to really say about that. As long as we, as long as we have one dispensary, I think that's perhaps sufficient.
Right.
I would think that at some point, we might want to allow that, yeah.
Yeah, you know, that was part of the discussion last time. And the other, I think the other reason why the township moved forward with allowing them was because there were a number of people in the business community who said, "Why are you, why would you turn away businesses from Antmi Township?" And, and there was someone who wanted a lease to someone, it never happened, who was here. Yeah, and so those are the two reasons why. At first, it was, "We don't want this at all," and then it did kind of change over time.
Yeah, for those two, they, you know, just be mindful that, you know, we all joke about smoking it and, you know, la, 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 but, you know, there is more to it than just that, so.
We're going to do that next Colorado anyway, so it's going to be a fun one.
Might be.
I had a really good joke about how they, they made the public comment to the legislature tomorrow at one in consideration of the stoners not liking to get up in the morning. You only knew what was going on in my head half the time. All right, we're moving on. Now, we're going to be in the B four.
I thought you were going to say it because it's after lunch.
Yeah, right. B four, John, take it away.
B four. I excluded, I have a very short memo, but I did put a copy of the draft B four ordinance rewritten, which is more traditional to material processing and warehousing, the things that you would find in it, based currently on what we have right now. So this is really subject to review by the, by the Planning Commission, but, you know. Typically, like I said, what you find in a, in a B four warehousing, material processing district is processing and distribution facilities. You find warehousing and mini-storage, which currently have, you have high-tech uses and you have some quasi-public stuff. And then under special uses, you know, you have like dry cleaning and contractor yards, where you have a lot of outdoor storage materials and equipment, lumber. where you have a lot of outdoor storage materials and equipment, lumber, and planning mills. And I included in there your private indoor and outdoor recreation facilities, which we currently have now. So I just reorganized some of the things that we have and I added some that you find that's more traditional of these, these type of, these type of districts. I also included in the B4, for example, under letter E, retail establishments, building and lumber supply stores, hardware and home improvement improvement and sales centers, garden centers and nurseries and wholesale stores. You usually find those in the warehousing district because of the, uh, they're, they, they require, uh, they have a lot of, you know, obviously semi-trucks and stuff that bring their products and stuff, so you don't necessarily see those in the traditional commercial district, but in the warehousing. So when you think about this, think about the area just down there by Arnold and, uh, you know, where you currently have, like where Great Lakes Trim is at, and some of the, some of the businesses down there. Arnold and, and 72 is, is the, uh, is kind of the, is part of the B4 district. These can be the types of uses that you see down there. Some of these, some of the properties down there, I, I know that the rail line is not extensive, but one of the ration, one of the reasons probably why that area developed historically back there was because it had access to freight rail. So you have, you know, a lot of these, some of these facilities used to have the need for rail for freight, so... That's kind of what I proposed in your B4. I mean, what we did is, we, we kind of cleaned up the, uh, with the US 3172 business district. We cleaned up a lot of the retail, the mixed-use and the office. The only other business district that's out there is the B4. We do have a planned business shopping center, and I don't plan on messing around with that one right now. It's only really, there's only a couple sites where it's, it's applicable. But this is really for planning commission review and discussion. I don't, I don't even need, I don't even know if you really, we really needed any action tonight. I just wanted to throw it out there before you start taking a look at it.
What, um, the next action, though, essentially would be to follow along with this, would be to set it for a public hearing and then, after a public hearing, recommend the board and county.
Board and county.
Review approval.
You could, you could, you could move to a public hearing and give public input on it if you want, but this is really the first time the planning commission has seen it written in form.
Yeah, because they didn't make it in the package.
We talked about it last, we talked about it last year.
Yeah. Okay. Questions? Trey, you wanna start us off?
Sure, I'm in favor of moving it to public hearing. The only thing kind of I have done is on, uh, that E under retail, retail establishment, that first line, I don't know. To me, it doesn't read right, but...
Too many ands.
Too many ands and, I don't know, it's hardware and home and farm improvement.
Okay.
You know what I mean, it just, I know, I know what you're trying to get at.
I, I'll break it out. Home Depot or Lowe's, is that, is that the... No, I mean, the planned shopping district. I'll break that out, Trey, that's a good thing. I'll say building and lumber supply stores, and then under that would be hardware, uh, home and farm improvement sales.
So the planned shopping center, why, why couldn't a retail establishment, you know, like hardware that is kind of Home Depot, Garden Center, and nurseries?
Well, I just didn't want people to think that this is the only place that they can go, need to. Oh, no. When you see the lumberyard and supply stores, I think the Home Depot would...
Right.
Yeah, Home Depots would be slotted in your, your D, your D3 planned shopping centers districts there where they have the, you, you have the, the large, you know, large, large, what they call large format retail. These would be smaller building and supply stores.
I just don't know.
What do you mean by that? Is that like a TSC or... Yeah, like a TSC or, what is the other one called, the Farm and Fleet?
Farm and Fleet.
Yeah, Farm, yeah, Granger Supply, uh, those, those kind of stores, small format, the smaller format ones, not the large format.
How do we know it's smaller format, I guess, is what I'm asking?
Uh, well, I don't wanna, you know, at one time, the township used 50,000 square feet as a, as part of their ordinance, and wasn't that subject to referendum? They had, they put a moratorium on, on different big boxes over 50,000 square feet. So, I mean, 50,000 is usually used as a cutoff line for, for what they call large format retail. Anything over that is considered large retail.
Right.
Large format retail. And if you want me to put a number in there, I can put a number in there, but try to leave...
Well, I just, if I wrote this and I was Home Depot and I had said that I wanted to go in, I'd say, "Let's do this."
Okay.
Do you want that?
Yeah, I mean, I could see, I could see, uh, I could see that interpretation.
Or vice versa, they say, "Oh, crap, we're only going to all this."
Right.
To outside of the...
Yeah, why do we want to be in the B4?
Probably.
Retail establishments less than 30,000 square, not 50,000.
I don't know what appropriate. Different, I don't know.
Then we're just picking random numbers, but it's like...
I'll look, I'll look at what's in footprints that are in there.
I don't know, why can't a Home Depot go out there?
Well...
Can't right now.
Double-doubt it.
You know that, right?
What?
Nor would you want it out there, 'cause it's a little bit of a character. Like, there's a lot of small warehousing processing installations.
Well, if we're looking, you know, things that might possibly go in there, uh, I don't, how do you pick one?
Well, what I would do, what I, what I would do, knowing your concern about Home Depot, is the fact, I would take a look at, I'd go online and take a look at what some of the formats are for some of the things like Granger Farm and Fleet, Tractor Supply, some of the nurseries, the commercial nurseries, and get, just get a, a basic square footage of what their footprints are and try to limit it a little bit above that, that and less. Okay? Because really, if somebody came in, they wanna do a Costco, or they wanted to put in a, a, a Home Depot or a Lowe's, you'd want those in the planned shopping district. That's what, that's what that whole district was set up for.
Playing double-doubt it. Trey, any other commentary, Mr. Mercer?
I think it's really too much of a problem at this point. No, I think, I think it would actually escalate us more as we move forward and clean it up, but, so I think about that.
Why not?
It's a philosopher over here. Challenging our mental. Okay, Beth.
No comments.
No comments.
No questions.
Doug?
I get, I, I don't see any reason why not to do it, but it brings in the reading of the farm improvement net. It gives me a question to ask you, John. What about a John Deere dealership? Where would that go?
I, I wouldn't...
Would that be considered in that?
I could think, think you could do it in here. I think you, I think you could do anything that would be under the retail establishment, I think farm improvement and sales center, I mean, John Deere dealership, I think they could go in there. 'Cause there's really no place else in the township for them to go, in the way the current zoning is set up. And yes, that's a good point.
What if you, um, what if you sold like SUV or, you know, real estate?
ATVs?
That's it. You knew where it was going.
They'd sell them right over here.
They were, yeah.
Yeah, good point. Apparently not very well.
I think, apparently, I think that's a good thing, Doug. I mean, under, under that, Doug, I could put something called farm equipment, sales and service.
Okay. Do you have any comments?
Not really. I just think like, like I said, the language, look on that a little bit.
So are you in favor of public hearing?
I guess.
Okay. Or just, do you want it in the packet next month again, or...
No, no. Move things forward.
These are the options, giving you options, intimidating. I found that intimidating you by keeping it on the agenda longer, like makes you act, so. It's a new strategy I have. Marcy, 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 Marcy. Public hearing, okay. I agree. Can you, can you provide any insight on like, if the E and F, I think I asked one before, on the special use permit, and you get down to the end and you have E and F, and it's that things can be higher than the, uh, the height thing, but not to be used for dwelling purposes, like people are gonna be living in radio towers? And then like the special building height regulation? I don't, I kind of don't get it, so if you have a big enough lot, you can make something really tall? If you set it back in the middle of the lot far enough? And it's in like every B district?
It is.
And it's so s...
It still has to go for site plan review, part of its fire.
Right.
Review, and if they can't service that size building, then...
Yeah, your metro says they can only do four stories.
Right, but I, I mean, I'm just...
I, I just carried...
We've been talking about cleaning up the ordinance, and I look at stuff like this and think...
We can clean that out, I certainly don't have a problem with it.
I just don't get, like, what happened to a planning commission like us 10 years ago, where they put this in every business district?
I, I'll tell you where that came into, uh, where that work was. I made my run at Myers to get rid of those, uh, their tall towers in the front, and this, this provision was brought up saying that they can, they can be in excess of the height because of all their setbacks, so they allowed them to go from, I think the height requirement was 30, they let them go to 39 feet because of that provision, as if they wanted to. So, I mean, that's where it works.
Like, when do we ever want that?
It's, it's planned commission call, I just carried it over from the existing ordinance.
I would be inclined to see that paragraph start disappearing, but that's just me, I don't, does anybody else? Are you talking about F partly from my data? F, just F. So if it's set back further, it can get an exception to be taller?
Giraffe house, I put it in for Doug, 'cause he mentioned the giraffe house.
Have you seen that?
Where, where is this?
Just, just, uh, we're rapid, so you know...
Oh, I know what you're talking about.
It sits right down in the hole.
I thought it actually involved giraffes. Okay, so at this time, I mean, if we're ready to set it for public hearing, if we wanna recommend changes, I would be, um, very much interested in anyone having an opinion.
I recommend that we take off F, so we don't have any other stores thinking they can make themselves taller areas if they just make their store bigger, wire, set F, set X further.
So we strike F, uh, clean up the language in I, and then would it be, if we wanted to, whatever that product is, we could set for public hearing to get some feedback on this?
Yeah.
Is that comfortable enough? Making some changes and that, or something?
Yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah, you're directing him to make changes and then set those, set the current version of the changes for public hearing.
So that would be one option?
There's no need to come back and say, "Yeah, we're, we're glad you're going back, let's set for public hearing."
We could also leave it on the agenda for next month, as just some old business.
Steve is getting noticeably shaken.
We could table it. I'm trying to leave all of our options out there, so we understand what ways we can go. Doug? With the two, the changes of S being gone and I maybe getting cleaned up?
Yep.
Do you have that? We're gonna give Marcy a minute to read it.
Yes.
Just one minute of time and you go.
Do we have a second? All right, I'll second it.
Okay. Oh, wait, wait. Okay. Uh, we have a motion and we have a second, is there any further discussion about this at this time? And then I'll do a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay, we'll be looking for a public hearing for next month. Final old business for tonight, US 3172 Business District ordinance number 029. At this point, it went what?
I'm, I'm sorry, come on. Nope.
At this point, it went to county and came back, right?
Yes.
And we received their comments.
I attended that meeting and, um, it was very well-received by them. It's the second form-based code type ordinance to come before them. They thought it was really clear and organized and, um, well-understood. They had a couple areas that they wanted clarification on, they thought it would, um, read a little bit better, and I brought those, um, couple comments to John for clarification. If you turn the page, I have a couple samples from the ordinance and we'll mark next to them where their comments were reflected. That was on 6.6, 3.5. They didn't quite understand it, and they brought up, "Well, what if there's nothing there, what if it's vacant property?" And so John inserted it into here, so it was clear if the property is demolished, redeveloped, or vacant, they don't comply with all the provisions of this ordinance. And I think that that does clarify that a little better. And then they brought up water quality is so important in the whole Brad Rivers area and, um, along with requiring, um, LIV designs in new development. And they wanted to see, um, that we stress the stormwater ordinance in addition to the LIV, in which we are working on presently a revision of the stormwater ordinance, that'll be coming to you, I believe, next month. And then they had a couple typed out with so John corrected those. And that's about all. It was very positive.
Overall, that's pretty impressive with how big of a project this is to have so many comments. Trey, we'll let you start. Any questions, comments?
No, Nikki just, um, answered it, she said the stormwater ordinance was... So that, that was my only question.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yep.
Question, answer.
Does? Steve? Marcy? At this point, our options with this, um...
I'm sorry, I only gave you one.
What?
For all this work, I only gave you one option for actions.
Oh, well, basically...
I should have given you more, but I...
No, that's fine, I think our op...
Maybe you never...
Our option with this, after all this hard work, please not be to table it or send it back to committee. So we, at this time, would look for a motion to recommend approval to the township board, it's already gone accounting, planning for review, uh, so it could potentially make it under, what month is this, April, agenda.
I make a motion that we recommend approval of the...
Ordinance.
Ordinance 29 to the board for approval.
Second by township. Okay, any further discussion on that? I would just like to say thank you for the committee that we had working on this, that was great work from John, good job. What? Vote? I am taking the vote, that was my discussion. We're allowed to discuss. Um, all in favor of approval, or recommend, recommending approval of 029 US 3172 Business District ordinance to the board, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Okay. The next thing, ordinance review committee. Nikki and I talked last week, you've been, you've probably heard murmur, murmur, flittering about rewriting some of this lovely document that we get to work with all the time. In looking at that, you know, Nikki, Nikki was suggesting maybe we start looking at, looking at forming a committee that could help work on identifying what it is that we need to work on, essentially. My comment was, we probably don't really know what's wrong with it. I'm open for debate on that, but, but I'm not the one who looks at this and says, "Okay, well, you know, in the other townships that I've seen and everything..." in the other townships that I've seen and everything usually it's done this way. That would be you three, the three musketeers of our zoning staff. So in my thinking, to figure out the scope of this project for the budget cycle that's coming up for next year to find out if we need some special meetings, would be start by formulating a list of, okay, here's what we have in here and here's what's, has it been taken a look at or really needs to be spruced up? And that would be, you know, Jack, you have things that drive you nuts. John, Nikki, you both have things. Nikki has lots of sticky notes. So we compile whatever that list is and then have a committee that maybe works with John, if we can get some money for our budget, that works on starting to tackle some of those so they happen maybe a little faster than the process that we normally work with. So that would be my recommendation, step one, just starting to identify what they are to know the scope of the project. Incidentally, I got an email today from the supervisor that I have a budget meeting next week. Which, so I need to get a, a look at our budget and try to figure out what's going on and the scope of this so we know really what we need to be asking for. So if I could have that yesterday.
We can get just, I guess the question I have for the planning commission is before we ever start really redrafting an ordinance is, what is the expectation of the planning commission relative to the ordinance? I mean, some communities, for example, want everything extremely detailed. And then other communities want things extremely simplified. You know, there's different ways of, of writing and crafting the ordinance. For example, under your S U P provisions, where, where an S U P, a special use permit's required, there's always another section that says, okay, if you're, if you're, let's say, if you're a gas station, you've got, when you're an S U P, you've got to go to this section of the ordinance, you may have to meet 10 or 15 special criteria for gas stations. Some communities, if it's a special use permit, they'll use the five same, maybe the same four, six, eight, 10 conditions for everything. And then the planning commission evaluates the use against those, those conditions, like a checklist. Okay, so that, that, that's a simplified version. And the detailed version is for every special use permit, you have to craft special regulations for it. So I mean, I think the planning commission needs to think before you jump into this, what, what is your expectation in terms of how you want to manage these things?
Can you leave us some more comments? Question or comments to either of us? If you're to review it and have some ideas?
Yeah, the other part of it is, just for example, under, under site plan review, some communities, if, if the, if the use is permitted by right, the applicant's required to submit a site plan, but the site plan is not reviewed by the planning commission, it's reviewed administratively. Okay? That's one, that's, that's one way. That's how some communities simplify it. So there's different, even different levels of review that you require somebody to go through. So I mean, those are policy decisions that I don't want, I don't necessarily feel comfortable making on your behalf because those are decisions that you need to make in terms of what your comfort level is, in terms of how, how much involvement you want into the review process. So those are just some of the things that we would need some feedback on.
Is there any way that that could be handled with one of your fancy surveys? Did I just blow your mind?
No.
Oh, how about a couple samples for them? Because again, it's like, we don't know all these caveats that you're talking about with the different ways other people do it. We do it our way, right?
How would you suggest it?
But also, and you have an example in your book of our way, which is a longer way, where you have every special use spelled out in the back of the book. They're not necessarily in the ordinance and they have their own regulations. You could get a look at that and see what you think, like gas stations. And what's required or would you rather have it in a uniform across the whole place?
Well, how about if we do it this way? How about if Jeff and I and Nikki go through and kind of put together a laundry list of things that we think need to be done? And then during that, we, we, we give you options and maybe how you could handle it.
Yeah, I hate to say this, but I, I mean, I, the way I learned the zoning book was just reading it, every section. And, and you can't, you do become familiar with it when you start to break it apart. So if you, I mean, if you just pick like an article every other night and read it for 10 minutes, and by the time you got to the next meeting, you have read the, you know, the whole thing and said, oh, okay. I mean, you know, you don't, you don't have a full understanding of what it all means until you actually start implementing. And you know, there are lots of things in here that you guys haven't seen at all, that they haven't come up. But, you know, you can read the parking section, the article on parking and say, okay, here's what we require for parking. This makes sense. And the stuff that John and Nikki were just talking about, that's eight is site plan review and nine is special use permit review. And it gives, the first part of nine is the special use permit, the general standards. And then each one is the, you know, for the, for the special uses that have extra requirements, they're just spelled out, you know. Conservation development's 9.3 and you can read what it, what it is. I mean, would you change that? I don't know. I mean, you might want to change some things in it to make it different. But on some level though, those are uses that have, that are, you know, have been deemed appropriate over time. And you might have someone come back later and say, oh, conservation uses might be required on the, no spec, open space.
Open space.
So, you know, and there are, there are reasons for some of those that make sense. And other of them maybe are, you know, superfluous or overly restrictive or overly regulated. Or maybe there's, maybe the finality say, boy, why, why don't we have, why don't we include this? But I think, you know, just like reading it over time gives you a good idea. And it'll help, I think, too, going forward, especially after we meet and we have some things to talk about that you have some, you know, familiarity with, you know? You've got a short section on what golf courses and country clubs have to, are required to meet. It's very short, but there, it's there. Maybe that's not necessary anymore, I have no idea. But maybe it's good or maybe you think that it needs change. But I think it, I mean, it would be good to sort of familiarize yourself with, with, with it to that level of detail so that you're, you know, when we talk, start talking about it more.
I can send you a survey monkey test.
Test?
Yeah.
Under the ordinance, can you?
Yeah.
That'd be, no more tests.
Go find it in the ordinance.
Right.
Don't let us take away that.
We should have a, like a word hunt. You know, when you go on like field trips and you have to find all the little signs by reading the plaques? Anyway, so we're trying to figure out this process. So I know you walk out of here and tomorrow you're going to wake up and go to work and forget about all this, but try to start thinking about how we tackle this. And I mean, the biggest thing is some of these consistent issues that we have that really need cleaned up. But it's the overall general structure might need to be looked at. My one question on that, like the golf course thing. So if we didn't have that, then when you're reviewing a site plan, you would be saying, well, this is a gas station. We need to be concerned about this. So you'd be relying on staff more to have the institutional knowledge and make sure they're checking the correct things?
Do you, I mean, the, the, there is a reason to add additional things like under this, under the site plan and try to find gas stations, see what the problems are. And sometimes they're appropriate, you know? Gas stations require enclosed building. All accessory uses and services shall be enclosed. Minimum site has to be 15,000 square feet with minimum lot width of 150 feet. Any buildings that are part of a gasoline service station shall be set back 40 feet from all street right-of-way lines and shall not be located closer than 25 feet. Access drives, no more than two driveway approaches shall be permitted directly from any other public street. I mean, some of the stuff maybe is unnecessary. Other times, sometimes it's, you know, appropriately there.
It's also that like directly complex with the Form Based Code.
Should we start reviewing this before we may find out if the board's going to approve the Form Based Code? Because how much of this is going to cut out?
Well, I think we, we need to review it anyway. There are provisions in here that, that drive us nuts.
Some are dated and-
Some are dated, yeah.
And there's just discrepancies. Regardless if the Form Based Code is adopted or not, there's already discrepancies between, here it's one way and here it's another. You think it drives you crazy trying to be Nikki?
I will tell you, you're not, you're not the only municipality that has a zoning book that's hard to work with. You know, you're, you're, you're the rule rather than the exception.
Probably the thing that would help maybe most is having the packet or major chunks of the packet ready a week ahead of time instead of just a couple of days.
We're trying to do that. We did get it out earlier this time, I think two days earlier. Ideally, it would come out Monday or Tuesday, the week before. So you'd have six or seven days. That's our goal.
And this you already have.
That's right.
You can start reading it tonight when you get home. And if you have any problems sleeping. This is like that Luminal stuff or whatever.
That's what Jeff says on 10 minutes.
That's all you're going to get it.
Train your eyes or your brain or anything.
Anyway, okay. If you guys could start trying to work on familiarizing yourself with the existing ordinance, even if it's just reading headings for now, just to know more about the layout of it. If you need a copy of it, don't be shy to ask. We can provide you with a printed one or email you one to put on your e-reader for your browsing pleasure. Right? Okay, moving on. Steve?
Yeah, actually, I was going to submit a written report, but I didn't do that yet. I do have one.
We'll just wait till next month.
Yeah, I'll send, I'll, I'll send it in. But basically, check trail Julie Clark's, working on identifying the route or routes, possible routes, and working with landowners for possible right-of-ways. That's the biggest thing right now.
Okay. Last item too is I went on Friday to a seminar on, on housing and housing opportunity and low-income housing and MISTHA is providing essentially grants and incentives for developers to, who are looking at, at providing affordable housing. And I think the most interesting takeaway that I had from this is MISTHA, which is the Michigan State Housing Development Authority, is finally revising their standards for low-income housing to include housing and transportation costs, which there's, in real estate, there's the big outage drive until you can buy. And we see that very strongly here in this area. So that's kind of exciting to start looking at transportation costs as a part of that low-income housing and, and what's affordable. Because you can buy a $60,000 place out in the middle of nowhere, but then your transportation costs are so high that it's really a moot point. So it was an interesting seminar. They're going to do an assessment on what products and incentives they should offer developers, which I thought tied in really nicely with our Form Based Code. And hopefully, once that comes up, if we can get them to look at ACME, it would be very beneficial, I think, for us.
Supposedly, the county got a large grant from MISTHA to do a target market analysis.
That's what this was about.
Yeah. They should be doing it for-
And I said, ACME, do it for ACME.
I think they'd be-
I said, we have all these nice properties that are just ready for residential development and we'd really like you to look over here.
Well, I could tell you, one of the things that'll be interesting to them is the fact that the, if the board approves the business district revision, it increases the amount of density from four dwelling units neighborhood to 12. And four is not feasible for multifamily development.
Don't we have 18?
You have, you have 12 in the mixed housing neighborhood. But currently, you have four, so you're-
Right.
Yeah, especially with the cost of land and infrastructure.
That's right. Right. Well, and it was really interesting that you're talking about, you know, is it cluster development that would do really well here? Is it row houses that would do really well? And they look at Esri and a couple other companies make these indices of who lives there. They have these really funny names, like the, the late bloomers and the dollar savers and the Bohemian somethings and the, I mean, they have all these little cohorts. And it says, you know, like these are the people that are living in your community and what amenities do they like? And that's kind of how they develop these. It's basically saying, here's your, here's, this target market analysis is what you should build to get these people to move into them. And it gives you something to take to a bank or a financial institution and say, look, I already have the market analysis. There's demand for this. I'm going to build it. Here's my cost and here's how it's going to happen. And so that's the, the value of having MISTHA do this target market analysis, so. So it'll be interesting. They're expecting rollout by October on that target market analysis. So hopefully, we can kind of keep a pulse on what's going on with that. There's a couple of meetings that they've already scheduled out. And I know I'm going to be out of town for one, so if anyone's interested in this, I'd really like someone else to attend that. It's in May sometime, which I'll get more information on that later. But that could be useful. That's it. Anything else?
Yeah, I, you know, just to add to that, just to give you an idea, when we, we took a look at doing the prosperity plan for the board, and some census tracts, which are small neighborhood units in, in Traverse City by the downtown, pay around 20% of their monthly income for mortgage payment and for, for gas because of their proximity to where they work. You look at census tracts in Calcasca and some of those folks there are paying upwards of 60% for mortgage and for transportation costs. They pay more for transportation costs than they do for food to buy for their families. So I mean, it, it's, it's, it's extreme, really. The disparity is very obvious in the census data.
Which they recently took one of these for Ingham County, which is unique because it has the university there, Lansing area in Michigan State. And that, she went through some of the findings from that.
Was that Sharon Woods?
I don't know, she's got like reddish hair.
That's true.
That sounds right, I don't know. But it was interesting to see what the end product looks like. And we're going to have that end product by the end of the year here, so. All right.
Well, you didn't have, you didn't open up a poll.
Oh, public comment. At this time, I'll open it to public comment.
I will wait.
At 9:54. If you'd like to come before the podium, state your name and address and please limit your comments to three minutes.
I guess not.
All right. Okay, we're going to close that and then make a motion to adjourn.
Yep.
All in favor of adjournment?